All right. Seven thirty-one, according to the atomic clock in Annapolis. Good evening and welcome, everybody, to the November third Village of Woodbury Planning Board meeting. I ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, again, welcome to the November third Village of Woodbury Planning Board meeting. I am your Chairman Chris Gerber, a rather lengthy meeting this evening, so we're going to get right into it. First item on the agenda, HV Realty Services Gold ARB. Review draft resolution for an ARB enriched preservation of proposed screen porch located at the rear of an existing single-family dwelling. Said properties located in three Riverdale Court in Central Valley and is owner of the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section two four eight, block one, lot two dot two. I think I see Jerry coming in. Now for this. Public hearing has been held, GML referrals been done, secret has been determined. So with that said, let's see here. After several pages of facts and findings. We get to the specific conditions. I tell you, Rick outdid himself on this one this time. Only, it's only two, it's only two lines. Prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village planner dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one to the satisfaction of the village planner. Any questions or concerns with that?
Nope.
Okay, I will offer a motion to accept the draft resolution of approval.
Second.
Second by Tommy, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it. Next item on the agenda, Harriman. Here shirts ARB. And I'm sorry if I got the name wrong. Review draft resolution for ARB enriched preservation of a proposed addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Said properties located within the Woodbury Villas subdivision at sixty-four Southfield Falls and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section two five five, block one, lot thirty-seven. Again, seeker's been taken care of, GML two thirty-nine, and the public hearing have all been addressed. Let me find the right resolution here, sixteen. Sixty-four Southfield, okay, again, Rick, you do have the two thousand eight hundred and seventy-three square feet highlighted is, was there a question on the square footage? You're muted.
Sorry, yes, I just wanted to confirm that that was the correct amount.
I think Mr. Hereish, here, is just joined. Two thousand eight hundred and seventy-three square feet, is that the proper square footage? For your application, sir? Or Jonathan, do you have it handy?
I'm looking in my notes to see if I can find. The answer, because I was anticipating your question.
While they're looking, Mr. Chairman, also on page three, there should be a formal determination that the planning board in its findings determined. That it's the rich preservation is waived because the structure will not be visible from a designated view corridor.
I see it there, do I need to read that, or just you making a note that letting us know that it's there?
Letting you know that it's there so that everybody knows that that's a finding, so if they object to the finding now is the time to speak or forever hold your peace.
Very good, sir.
I don't agree with that number. If you look at the. If you look at the plan set, it says Hirsch, it says Hirsch, it's this shape, that says Hirsch ARB. Ten six twenty twenty-one submission. You look on the, the second page, there's a square footage table. And. The addition is one forty-four plus three eighty-five plus four twenty-four. That's seven hundred, eight hundred and nine. That's nine hundred fifty-three square feet for the addition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. All right. You'll make the, you'll make the change on the file, right, Rick?
That's correct, already made.
Okay, thank you, again, several facts and pages of facts and findings here, we get into the specific condition. All new planting shown on the plans are the existing three trees on site shall be planted in a timely manner consistent with planting seasons and to maintained in a healthy and vibrant condition in perpetuity. Should said plantings end or trees die or become diseased, they shall be promptly removed and replanted with the same plants by the applicant subject to availability. Questions or concerns on that? Number two, prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village planner dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one to the sack satisfaction of the village engineer. That is a great date, October fourteen, that's the day I was born. Everybody okay with that? Okay. To accept draft resolution of approval with the square footage update made by Attorney Golden. Do I have a second? Rick down at the corner there, any questions? All in favor?
I.
Sorry. Okay. Chug the lighter off. Number three, Woodbury Commons space two fifty-six dash two sixty-two, review draft resolution for site plan, special permit and ARB, a proposed demolition of existing space. Six, six thousand five hundred ninety-six square feet with rebuild of a new nine thousand eight hundred and six hundred and ninety square foot building at the same location. Said property located within Woodbury Commons Shopping Center on Route thirty-two in Central Valley and known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section two two five, block one, lot seventy dot two. And Section two two six, block one, lot one, Section two two six, block one, lot one. Okay, again, secret has been reaffirmed, GML was a local determination, and a public hearing was held and closed in October twentieth. All right, we get. Again, after several pages of facts and finding, we get into the specific condition here. This one's a little bit lengthier, sorry. Okay, specific condition one, all apple oil conditions attached to the site plan, special permit and architecture review of water approvals from nineteen ninety-seven to the present for premium outlet partners LP Chelsea GCA retail, retail, realty partnership LP CBG Partners LP. Also referred to in the same as Woodbury Common Premium Outlet and any subsequent amendments there to are hereby incorporated into this resolution and are to remain in full force and effect. And this approval is subject to and conditioned upon satisfaction of those conditions as if it were set forth at length herein. Okay. Storing construction safety shall be sole responsibility of premium outlet partners LP and their contractors with all appropriate safety measures provided, these features shall be to the satisfaction of the village, village building department for public safety. All signs shall be in accordance with the previously approved signage plan for Woodbury Commons and approve amendments here too. There too, sorry, a twenty-foot wide clearance among permanent structures, buildings, planters, seating areas, kiosks at the all shall be maintained for emergency service organizations, ESOs. Access and passage as demonstrated on the ESO plan provided. Number five, ESOs, the ESO shall be involved with the construction phase to coordinate any temporary rerouting of the access route based on temporary construction obstructions. Utility placement shall be in accordance with the requirements of the village water and sewer department and prior approval. Existing drainage and sanitary utility pipes under buildings shall be removed where possible. If abandonment in place is necessary, they should be, they should be removed to the maximum extent practicable, captain filled and flowable fill Kcrete or similar drains. Sorry, Kcrete or similar, there was period there. Drains and sanitary lines may not be located directly above active water lines. Any areas found to produce ponding shall be addressed by the applicant with additional drainage facilities as determined by the building inspector. Suite three eighteen shall be vacated prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any space that is part of the two fifty-eight to two sixty-four reconstruction and shall remain vacant until additional GLA is available. Prior to the plan signing, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum, the memorandum of the village engineer dated October fifteen, twenty twenty-one to the satisfaction of the engineer. Comply with the memorandum of the village planner dated October fourteen, twenty twenty-one to the satisfaction of the village planner. Submit an updated GLA plan, AutoCAD and PDF format and GLA tally, PDF and Excel format, consistent with approval to the satisfaction of the village engineer. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide confirmation to the satisfaction of the building inspector that a second egress to proposed space two fifty-eight is not required. Prior to the issue went to a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall confirm their as-built area of the proposed space spaces two fifty-eight to two sixty-four by survey. Certified by a New York State Licensed Land Surveyor submitted to the building department. If needed, the GLA plan entirely shall be updated to the satisfaction of the building inspector to reflect the as-built area. If revised, a copy of the revised GLA plan entirely shall be submitted to the planning board and village engineer. Its approval events the following prior approvals insofar as the decomittal of space for adequate GLA has been significantly demonstrated to allow the occupancy of the following spaces. A twenty nineteen Michael Kors action condition number six, suite three two four may be occupied. B twenty twenty suite three one five, suite three fifteen action condition number eight. Sweet nine forty-six may be occupied. Okay. That was mouthful right there, all right, I'll offer a motion to.
Can I just ask a question?
No.
Um, Rick, in your memo, when you, you had a necessary condition, is that reworded in one of these conditions?
Yes.
Which one is it?
Well, it has to do with the decommit, the decommission of that space.
Number seven, Sandy.
Okay, that's, I wasn't sure if it was seven or, okay, or eleven, okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or concerns? Okay, I'll offer a motion to accept the draft resolution of, of approval.
A second.
Second by Sandy, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much for this, Rick, you'll have Kelly send them to me electronically to sign?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on the agenda, Stein Ideal Design sixty-six Southfield Falls ARB. Review application submitted for ARB enriched preservation of proposed addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Said property is located within Woodbury Villas subdivision at sixty-six Southfield Falls and is known in the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as Section two five five, block one, lot thirty-six. Mr. Stein or representative for this application here this evening? Anybody here representing the Stein Ideal Design sixty-six Southfield Falls application?
Hold on.
Someone just. The owner is Strulovic. The. There anyone in the waiting room?
I just let, I'm just letting, there was one more person that doesn't have a name coming in, so we'll see. There's a Mel and a JJ that just joined. Sixty-six Southfield Falls ARB. Anybody here for that application, representing that application or the applicant themselves? All right. We shall move that back to the bottom of the list and come back to it. All right. Mayor ninety-five Scottamunk ARB review application submitted for the ARB enriched preservation of a proposed addition to the existing single-family dwelling. Said properties located ninety-five Scottamunk Road in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section two oh four, block one, lot one oh one dot two. Do we have an applicant or an applicant's representative?
Yes.
They are, sir, how are you, sir?
You got to tell you.
Okay, good, good, all right, just um, real quick, two-minute refresher on your application, and we'll go on to the consultant's report.
Um, we just want to build a glass room of six hundred and sixty square feet to addition to my existing house and a nine, and a nine parcel acres.
Okay. All right, Jonathan, you want to go ahead with your memo then, please?
We got through the last one so fast, I'm still flipping pages. You have a memorandum from Nelson Pope and Voorhees dated October twenty-sixth. In our report. We noted that we received the short EAF part one. And we saw that the. Question fifteen should be answered yes. Because we found that the project site is located in the vicinity of endangered or threatened animals, the northern long-eared bat and the timber rattlesnake. So that should be answered yes, though typically for a single-family home, even if you answer the question, yes. For a project of this size, you wouldn't necessarily be required to do anything about those, those animals, but should be noted on the form for the record. Then in our memorandum, we had asked for trees, the eight-inch-plus caliber trees to be labeled. And they are now labeled on the site plan. The applicants confirm there's going to be no exterior lighting proposed. We would like to see still that Connor contour intervals be provided and show where the steep slopes are. But we'd like to see the contour lines on the plan so we can. You know, get a show that there are no steep slopes. The bulk requirement table was added as we requested. For landscaping, there appears to be existing vegetation in the area where the additions proposed. But we. Need confirmation that there'll be no vegetation clearing or removal of those trees. The site plan shows two trees in the general vicinity of the proposed construction. And the applicant should clarify how these trees will be protected during the construction project. Oftentimes, people will put like a, a plat- plastic fencing to make sure that the contractors know to stay away from that tree and not, not to cut it or bump into it. The applicant confirmed in an email dated September sixth that no exterior lighting will be proposed. Then. We did receive some new materials that just came in, and my comments may not reflect all of the, the new materials that were. That were received. We got a. A, a new site plan. I think just yesterday, and we got. I think there's some photographs that came in. But we will have to take a little bit more time to review all those and catch up. As requested, there you put a note on the plan saying that anti-reflection window film will be applied to any of the new windows installed. And the roof slopes. Green gray is an adequate natural color for roofing. And in the, on September sixth, applicant said that they intend to use roofing materials to match the existing house, and that samples will be brought to the next meeting. And. We agree that the house is not visible from Ridge Preservation Corridor, so the board may want to, may waive all of the compliance with Ridge Preservation. The, the applicant was asked to submit photographs of nearby homes, and I don't think I've got. I think some may have just recently come in, but I did not print them out, but if the board has gotten them, you can review those photographs, there they are, and make a determination whether you believe the. House is adequately. Fitting into the surrounding neighborhood, and that's a summary of my report from October twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Jonathan, does anybody from the board have questions for Jonathan or for the applicant on this application? Hey, there was an email sent out from the building department, this applicant did submit the following four photos showing the houses that are directly around his, his home. I do agree with NPV after taking a ride over there, the house is not visible from a view corridor, given how it's situated on the property and the landscaping that is around it. I don't know, has, has the rest of the board feel about as far as Ridge Preservation goes, do we agree that they are exempt from those requirements based on the data that's been submitted and the knowledge of the land?
I agree.
All right, I forget, Rick, do we need to make a motion, or you just put a note in the finding?
We'll just put a note in the findings.
Okay, very good, the applicant did also submit to the building department colors of the siding and the roofing material they're going to use. And I think once NPV sees the updated site plan that was submitted as well, they should find most of the items are in order. With that said, I'd like to offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for the seventeenth of November for this application.
A second.
Was that Tommy?
That was Tommy.
Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we, do we need anything else for the applicant for the, before the public hearing, I think they've submitted everything that is required unless I'm missing something here.
Excuse me, the updated, the updated site plan provided, I'm just not sure if he realized includes the contour lines that the engineer requested.
Yep, I said that, not everybody seen, not everybody seen that yet, so.
And yeah, yeah, the EAF form, the updated EAF form, question number fifteen was also replaced, answer number fifteen, so I guess everything was provided.
Yeah, so there's your. Yeah, so there's the fifteen fixed. And then. Here is the updated site plan with the setbacks, the trees, the contour lines around the addition. Um, and then, hold on, we find just your other email. Just had it up to.
It's actually easier to do this on Zoom to deal with these submissions to come in, just like the day before the meeting. And everyone can share them.
Yeah, um, okay, so the, so, no, it's not encouraged, but we had, we have a public hearing coming up anyway, so it's not like where. The, we still have time to review.
Right.
So there's the siding. You don't need to see everybody's face, and then again, the roof shingles to match what's on the existing structure. So unless I'm missing something, I think we, the applicant has given us everything that we've requested. And I think we're good to, like I said, we have the public hearing scheduled.
If I may ask you, what's the process, you do a public hearing, and then on that night, if there's no objection from the public, then the board votes?
We vote.
Sorry, I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask Chris if you wanted to authorize us to draft a resolution of approval since it's fairly straightforward, and if there's any problems, you'll deal with it at the meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we could just do what we normally do is and put the last village planners memorandum that they have to comply with, so I like to make a motion for counsel to draft the resolution of approval for this application. Any question? Okay, Rich, any questions?
Um, Chris, I do have, I just have one question, I'm sorry, and I meant to ask it before. So this addition is not going on pillars or pilings, is there going to be a basement under this addition?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Is that shown on the plans?
Yes.
Okay.
It was on, I think it's actually on his original submission, if I remember correctly.
Right, so it looks like. Like on the end of the house, it looks like there's a door that comes out right now.
Correct, and that'll be extended.
Okay, but the door is then going to move to the back of the house.
Correct, it's going to move to the, to the, to the new, to the side or to the new addition, from the new addition, the door will come out, same door in that area.
In the basement?
From the basement out, correct.
Is this shown on the, the most recent plan that you submitted?
No, that was on the previous plan.
Okay, well. It's on original submission.
Correct.
So this new submission is in addition to the other one and doesn't, it's not a collective submission of all the prior information?
It's just the site plan that they asked me to update.
Correct, we didn't change anything on the, on the building plan, and we want only, only one typo that the, that the.
All that is, for purposes of the planning board, all of that is considered the site plan. Okay, because that's what gets approved, that's why I'm trying to make it clear so that I can make sure that I reference the proper plans in the resolution of approval.
No problem.
Yeah. So yeah, Rick, his original submission has showing the basement and the door relocation, and then this new submission. He added the contour lines, the limits of disturbance, the bump table, and the trees and stuff that are going to be there. Or not, or not going to be disturbed, sorry.
Yeah. And I've got the electronic copies of that, and I agree.
Okay. Um. So just to answer your question, yes, because it's a straightforward, we'll have the public hearing on the seventeenth. We've authorized counsel to approve a draft resolution, as long as there's nothing major that comes up at that public hearing, we couldn't approve it that night. Counsel then sends it to me to sign electronically, I sign it, and it goes to the building department, and then the building department can issue the permit from there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, anybody else for this applicant? Okay, in two weeks, then.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too, take care. I'm not sharing anymore, right, no, okay. Uh, next item on the agenda, Ostriger seven pheasant run peasant run ARB review application submitted for ARB enriched preservation of a proposed addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Said properties located seven peasant run in Highland Mills and is known in the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section two four seven, block one, lot four. Do we have the applicant or representative for seven pheasant run here? That you, sir, Moses? No.
I see Mr. Ostriger.
You see him on the attendance list, Jonathan?
Yeah, I. Yeah, I, I, I see Moses Ostriker, I see his, uh, his cameras on.
Yeah. Moses, can you hear us? Mr. Ostriker? And we can't hear you, sir. I haven't sent him a message. All right, John, you wanna just go with your memo first while Mr. Ostriker works?
Or, um, you have a memorandum from NPV on this application, the owner's Jacob Deutsch. And Moses Ostriker is uh, applying on his behalf. It's seven pheasant run. My first comment was we wanted a part one short EAF form that was submitted uh. Yesterday, November second. Uh, we asked for a floor plan, there was a floor plan submitted yesterday. And it clarified that what's happening is um. Uh, there isn't any increase in the number of bedrooms. Uh, and if Mr. Ostriker is here, he could explain how the spaces are being switched around, but now if you look at the. The floor plans that were submitted yesterday, you can see that um. Uh, the, as the spaces are being renovated, moved around, they're maintaining four bedrooms in before and after. Uh, in terms of zoning compliance, uh, we asked for a bulk requirements table. To show height, line, coverage and dimensions uh, that. Uh, that are, that are going to be changing, and that uh, still has not been submitted. Also, uh, we still don't have any information on whether the home. Will be visible from designated view corridors or not. Uh, white clabbered, four inch clabbered vinyl siding has been um. Uh, proposed for the addition. Once again, although the board typically discardes white colors, the, the house is already white. And this is an addition, but you should probably discuss whether that is okay with the board. Uh, the roof is proposed to be Tamco black, which appears to meet the color, the natural color standard. Um, we ask that a note be added to the plan that anti-reflection window film will be applied. To the new lowe windows. Uh, we still are looking for confirmation that there'll be no uh, clearing of or removal of eight inch. Or greater uh, caliper trees. Um, we did get some photos of surrounding homes submitted. In response to our comment six, we gave our standard comment, that we wanna see photos of surrounding homes that the board can compare. Uh, and see if this addition will fit in with its surroundings. And uh, those are our comments from October twenty six.
I see Mrs., Mr. Ostriker is connected to audio now. Does anybody from the board have questions for Jonathan or for Mr. Ostriker? No. Okay. Jonathan, how do you feel about a public hearing on the seventeenth? I know there's still some outstanding items.
Well, um. You know, I, I uh. Given that it's not a brand new home, it's an addition. Uh, it may be okay to schedule the public hearing, but. Um, it doesn't appear that there, that, I know we need a bulk table, but it doesn't appear to have bulk issues. Um, and. Uh. The uh, given the color, the, the, the color discussions. Um. And the vegetation clearing, uh, I, I think it's probably okay to, to schedule the hearing. And try and get these details buttoned up uh. By the end of the hearing process.
Yeah, so this is some of the photographs the applicant has submitted. It's already, like you said, the house is already white there. Uh, with the black roof. I don't, I think if you. I, based on the pictures, I don't think there's anything that's gonna have to get cleared. But yes, the applicant will just have to note that for us. Does anybody else from the board have any concerns? Yes, no, maybe.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Believe these were the pictures, yeah, of the houses in the surrounding. Neighborhood that the applicant submitted. And then this is the. Um, floor plan that Jonathan was. Talking about.
And it shows what's there today.
And what's going to be.
Yeah.
And then the EAF. Okay.
Basement underneath this proposed addition?
No, it's over the garage, Rick.
Oh, that's right, this one is the over the garage, okay.
Yeah, so there's not, that's uh, the garage is on slab there.
Got it.
Alright, so I think what we'll do for this one is we'll just open, being there are a couple of items that are still outstanding, um. Mr. Ostriker, hopefully you can hear me, um, I see you there. Uh, if we can get those items buttoned up, Jonathan, I'm pretty sure probably got the memo over to you. Uh, we can finish moving this along, so I'll make a motion to hold a public hearing on this on the seventeenth of November. Second by Sandy, any questions? All in favor?
Hi, sorry for coming in, um, I am Shloemigal from Hartman Design. I'm here for here. I missed you in a minute, um, one, just want to check if we'll still be today.
Your sixty-six Southfield Falls?
Sixty-four. Just a vote. On the agenda today.
Now, that's done, it was, it was already approved.
Oh, you already did a.
Already did, already did the vote on that one, sir.
Oh, oh, I was checking by seventy-three, yeah, I missed it.
Yeah, so no, that, that'll be signed on the next day or two and sent over to the building.
Day or two, okay, thank you so much, have a good night.
You too, sir. Okay, so. I'm sorry. Did we, did we, did we vote on the public hearing? I know Sandy second. We did, okay, good. Alright, so public hearing for the seventeenth, Mr. Ostriker, just uh. If you can just uh, get the last couple of items that Jonathan uh, has put in his memo. Uh, will be, will should be good to go after the public hearing, sir. Not if you, if you can at least nod. Okay. Alright, thank you, sir. We'll see you on the seventeenth for the hearing. Alright. Before, I wanna just go back to Stein Ideal Design sixty-six Southfield Falls.
Yeah, hi. I'm here first time.
Okay, sir, how are you?
Good, um, let me turn my, my, I don't know how to turn my camera on. Is this okay with you? One second. Hi, good afternoon, hi, good night, everyone.
Uh, just a quick two-minute overview of what we're doing, and then we'll, we'll get into it, okay, sir?
Okay, sure, take your time.
Let it know, if you could just give us a quick overview of the project, then we'll, we'll go with the consultants and that.
Oh, um, this is gonna be uh, just a small addition, it's gonna be on post, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a. Um, a concrete, it'll be on post, just, just a one floor, uh, about eight hundred square foot addition. A living room addition.
Okay, thank you, sir. Jonathan, you wanna go ahead?
Uh, yes, you have a NPV memo dated October twenty-sixth, and uh. Submission comments, uh, we had asked for a short EAF part one form. Um, that was submitted on November first. Um, we asked that uh, they add features to the site plan. Including uh, existing and proposed contours showing grading. Any stormwater management changes, any drains, a landscaping plan that shows uh. Proposed or existing and existing plantings. And if any trees are proposed to be removed, the addition to show those with an X if applicable. Um, we also would like to see a uh, a bulk table. Uh, showing that the addition meets the setback requirements. Uh, and yard requirements and the building height uh, should be shown on the. Uh, bulk table, it's going to be added as well as on the elevation drawing set. Uh, in terms of Ridge Preservation, we would like to see something evidence. Whether or not this is in a Ridge Preservation View Corridor, Designated View Corridor. Uh, they've designated uh, Georgia Pacific Gray Vinyl Siding for the addition, which appears to match the existing home. And the board should discuss whether that's acceptable. Um, the uh, roof slopes, they've specified charcoal GAF shingles. Which appear to meet the standards. Uh, we asked that uh, they add a note to the plan. That anti-reflection window film will be applied to any new windows installed. Uh. And uh, you already mentioned the landscape plan. Uh, we did receive photos uh, of surrounding homes with their relative sizes. That the board can use in the ARB review to determine. Whether this proposed addition is in keeping and in harmony and compatible with surrounding homes. Uh, so those are our comments from October twenty-sixth.
Does the board have any questions or concerns for Jonathan's memo or for the applicant? No, okay. So a little bit of, um, just a few items to uh, catch up with on Jonathan's memo, so we can move the application along. Um, as far as Ridge Preservation goes. I'm thinking. So this is sixty-six South Fields. So this is going to be. The view corridor here. So judging by Google Maps, I don't think, personally, I don't think you'll be able to see from the view corridor. But sir, if you could just take a couple of pictures um, from the view corridor itself, pointing to where the house is. Um, uh, so you just, you'd have to stand on Duntonburg, or not Duntonburg, on thirty-two by the high school, looking towards the property. And then just like.
Um, actually, I did it, but I didn't have time to submit it. So I'll submit everything, everything together tomorrow, I, I'm still waiting to get back from the engineer, the, the site plan, the updated site plan. With, with, um, I have no gradings because everything is on post, it's no, it's not gonna be like a foundation.
Okay, I think, okay, you just gotta, I think what Jonathan, you're looking for the actual gradings that are on the existing site, right?
Yeah, just, ju-ju-just to see if there are any changes, any changes to drainage. Um, you know, that, any, anything that might uh, impact a neighbor or uh. But if, if it's on posts and really nothing is changing, uh. If we could see the existing, you know, the, the existing grading, I don't know how steep the site is. Without, without seeing the contour lines.
Okay, I will update everything, I hope to have everything in a few days, and I'll email it to the planning board.
Okay.
Okay. Um, what do you think? You think we do, we could do the public hearing on the seventeen, Jonathan, what do you think?
Uh, once again, since it's not visible in the view corridor, and it sounds like the applicant has materials, and if. Uh, we can. Uh, get them in time for the uh, to, to review them. What, the hearing was on what date again, proposed?
Seventeen Design Meeting.
That's in two weeks. Um. I'd like to have the uh, materials uh, by next Tuesday. In order to, to review them, uh, I think that, that's reasonable. That's usually when I do the work for the following, for the following meeting.
Okay, um, what? Uh, what materials are talking about, deciding?
Just the, 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 the uh, site plan that you said you're, is coming tomorrow.
Okay, I hope they'll have it, once I'll have it, once I have it, I'll send it in, so I will gonna call the engineer tomorrow morning again. To make sure that you're having it done by tomorrow or Friday next.
Okay, so why, why don't we do this? I, I wanna keep the application moving, um, so if worse comes to worse, we can hold the public hearing. Uh, over, if we don't have all the materials in time to review.
Okay.
So in interest of trying to keep the application moving, uh, I'll offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for the seventeenth of November. Can I get a second? Second by Sandy, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
So sir, as soon as you can get that stuff over, uh, the better off will be for you to get, you know, to keep the process moving along, okay?
Okay, thank you, I really appreciate.
Before, um, before the applicant exits, can you just identify your name, please?
My name, my name is George Jeremias, and I'm working for Stein, Stein wasn't able to, to comment, so he, he sent me to, to represent him for the board.
Thank you.
I'm working together with him, the same office.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next item, Woodbury Fresh Review and Discuss Documents for Site Plan. Now all of a sudden, everybody's video pops up, um. Woodbury Fresh Review and Discuss Site Documents for Site Plan, Special Permit, and ARB have proposed conversion of a two. Existing retail spaces into a specialty supermarket. Said property is located within the Woodbury Center at thirty-seven Center Drive in Central Valley, and is known in the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps. Is section three five, lot two, lot one dot twelve. Who's making a call?
Muted.
So who's, who's running point for the applicant?
Uh, so Jason Anderson, the architect, uh, Anderson Design Group, how you doing?
Good, how are you this evening?
Doing well, doing well, thanks.
Um, I, I know we got a lot of things to talk about, uh, about tonight, so why don't you just. We'll start off with just a real quick overview of what you guys are doing, and then we'll get into the engineers' reports.
Sounds good, we'll, we'll keep it very, very brief. Uh, just real quick though, I wanna introduce Dennis Lynch with MJ Engineering with us, Mel Fire is with us as well, the owner's rep. Um, so we're here to answer any questions, of course. Um, so basically, we know the property, right? It's uh, Woodbury Center, we've got Forever Twenty-One Lennox Stores. Uh, both vacant, so we're looking to put a specialty supermarket in there. Uh, that's thirty thousand four hundred and forty-five square feet, those two stores together. And we're looking to put a seventeen hundred and eighty-three square foot loading dock addition off the back. Um, that brings us to thirty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-eight square feet, and then inside, we also have two storage mezzanines. And so that's sort of uh, the scope of what we're looking to do. But of course, in addition, at the different uh, store, different applications, so. Uh, we're looking for a new sign to not only be on the monuments, but also on the front of the building.
Okay, thank you for that, sir. Natalie, we'll change it up a bit, you're up.
Alright, uh, I'll try to be brief also, but like you said, there's a lot of things to discuss. Um, so this is the second appearance of the applicant before you, at your last, at their last appearance, you requested some additional information. Um, so this is the second appearance of the applicant before you at your last, at their last appearance, you requested some additional information on deliveries and scheduling, uh information on rooftop mounted equipment, generators and sound attenuating enclosures, and also turning movement analyses. Um, with respect to the deliveries and scheduling, the applicant has um provided their schedule. They expect to have two to three deliveries before seven. Um, if the planning board, uh, you know, thinks that appro- thinks that's appropriate uh and wishes to consider any reasonable conditions, uh you can include them as part of your action for special permit. Um, with respect to the screening of the rooftop mounted equipment, um, we assume that the replacement of the existing equipment um will be appropriate since it's gonna be in the same loc- location as it is now. Um, however, the code requires that the planning board uh decide if screening of new equipment is adequate. So we recommend uh you review that with the applicant and request that they provide that information to your satisfaction. Um, with respect to the generators and the sound attenuating enclosure, the applicant advised that they will provide a sound attenuating enclosure uh to comply with the local ordinances, and they believe that that could be reviewed by the building department. If that's something that the planning board agrees with, uh again, that can be a condition of your action. Uh, we provided some comments on the turning movement analysis in our memo. Uh, we'd like to see the applicant provide those uh movements showing that there are actually trucks in the in the loading dock spaces just to confirm that, you know, if something's parked there already, uh other trucks can get around it. Um, additionally, we have asked uh the applicant to confirm whether or not uh the restrictions based on the striping and the addition will actually reduce that two-way traffic lane to a one-way traffic lane. Um, and I know Mazur has com- or Colliers has comments on this as well, so um primarily I'll defer to them. Um, at the last appearance, the applicant advised that no E N facilities are proposed, no overnight trailers would be permitted, and a full-time employee is gonna be responsible for cart collection. Uh, again, similar to deliveries, we think that these can be conditions of your special permit, as long as you don't take any exception to those conditions. Um, with the respect to the rest of our memo, uh, the applicant is going to be eliminating two parking spaces um which will require a waiver from the planning board. Uh, your approver for approver for uh approval for Aldi's uh also required a waiver, so this will further increase the degree of um of that waiver. Uh, also, we noted that the applicant's plan appears to reflect uh parking required from um a prior approval, but uh that was all uh resolved during the Aldi's approval, and if the planning board thinks that um it's appropriate, perhaps it's makes sense to share that information with the applicant, so um, you know, they have that more current information and and can revise their analysis based on that. Uh, that would require your board's authorization for us to distribute that to the applicant. Um, with respect to water and sewer, uh, that's gonna be by Harriman uh for the water and Orange County Sewer District for the sewerage. Um, in typical with your past practice, we recommend that you ask the applicant to submit will serve or to request will serve letters from those utilities. Uh, we had some comments on the stormwater, which I think that the applicant's gonna be able to address with a future revision. Um, the applicant has also generally indicated their intention to match the existing materials and colors of the center. Uh, the ARB form, I think, still needs to be filled out to reflect that. Uh, we've recommended condition of your action indicating non-reflective doors and windows will be provided, and that's similar with past practice. Uh, one thing I think we should discuss uh has to do with signage. Um, the applicant responded to our prior comments indicating that the proposed sign area is less than the two existing signs for both Lennox and Forever Twenty-One combined. Uh, that was inconsistent with the opinion that we received previously from uh Inspector Hand, who was, you know, the acting uh code enforcement official at the time. We were reviewing the prior Aldi's approval uh and noted and noticed that there was a condition of that resolution, which I quoted in our our memo. Um, that the planning board did not authorize any sign to be erected, and the applicant was required to submit a sign application to the building department to confirm the sign details, including area mounting, quantity and other features to satisfy the village code, the standard building department practice, and the sign requirements for the center. Um, basically, my comment is if you generally agree to the way the sign looks, then perhaps it's something that the village uh building inspector could resolve as far as the sign area that should be required. Um, and again, that that could be a condition of your action if you agree. Um, we've recommended that the ESOs receive a copy of the utility and the turning movement plans for comments. Uh, there was something we identified in our memo uh with respect to the standpipe location on the building and uh where the new ramp is located and whether or not there's gonna be adequate access to that. Um, and then the rest of our comments are related to potential conditions of your action or from other consultants and uh things that we think that the applicant can revise with a future submission. Uh, Seeger was concluded previously. Uh, the GML referral was sent to the county, and you received a response that it's a local determination. And unless you have any questions, that's all I have at this time.
Natalie, do you remember if we put it, I thought we put a restriction on the delivery time for all these in part of their resolution?
I can look that up. I don't know offhand.
Um, and I know this, I have some concerns with parking, and I also did speak to the chief of the fire department. There are concerns with the standpipe location.
Okay.
Uh, especially once the ramps get built out. Uh, it's already tight now.
Right.
They have concerns that once there's stuff back there, if they do need to get to it, actually on both of uh this applicant's projects of this building and over in the old Odell's location, but we're not talking about Odell's tonight. Um, the generator is rooftop mounted, I thought, correct?
Correct.
All right, so then we're that that can't be reviewed with the building inspector. That would have to be done as part of site plan approval, right, Rick? Because we don't have the ability to waive that.
Correct.
The um, the screening for sure has to be reviewed um by the planning board. The sound attenuating con- enclosure, I think, um, may be a separate issue, but I, that's up to you, Rick.
No, I I I think all of those ought to be um th- they are the powers of the planning board, and the planning board wouldn't be able to delegate those powers to the building department.
We we've done, I know we've done it on prior applications, like the cell towers and stuff. We've had a review the uh the testing schedule and the attenuators and stuff, so that will be stuff that will need to be provided to this board, too. I know uh Jason, in your response memo, you had said you would work that out with the building department, but that's something we're gonna have to work out um here. Uh, so again, that would just be me on the prior uh next submission. Um, I don't know, Natalie, I think it's even might probably more of Rich. Uh, again, we're looking for another reduction in parking here. Um, there, what I was looking at as I drove through that shopping center, um, we we've done a number of waivers for parking, but w- we've never taken into account, I think, of all the spots that have been turned into curbside pickup locations. All these has four, Coles has six, Staples has one, uh, Michael's has four. Uh, TGI Fridays actually has turned the entire filing into curbside pickup with horse in different color, but um so when we're talking about parking reductions, um, I don't know, Rick or Rich, um, how should we be considering those spots? Because they are technically being dedicated to other purposes. I look at it as like a handicap spot, like a handicap spot, not a normal parking spot.
I I mean, from my perspective, the question is whether or not the the site has sufficient parking to accommodate what the proposed use is. And I I mean, I think, I think the answer there is yes. I mean, obviously, the 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 spots that you're talking about are are kind of the the prime locations for a lot of those uses and and um, you know, kind of the closest to those. So they move to the to the building, so, you know, they probably wanna be used more readily, but um I I I think from just a pure, does the parking, does the site have enough parking to accommodate this? I I I think the answer is yes, and then the spots that they're proposing to remove are are actually behind the building where where the utilization is probably either employee parking or probably not heavily utilized, so I don't think that's a huge concern. Um, I I don't know exactly how you treat the um the those dedicated spaces, but um I don't know, that's that that's something for 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 the thought, I guess. Um.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring it up. I want everybody to put their thinking caps on, because it's it's the wave of the future, right? Everybody, nobody wants to go into a store every morning. Everybody wants to pull up and park and get their stuff. Um, I've seen it in some other shopping centers in our community that they have six, seven, eight dedicated spaces uh for these curbside pickups, and they're actually being used as regular parking spaces because the parking lots are so are tight. Um, you know, and I know everybody says, well, we have an overabundance of parking at this facility. Um, we do and we don't. Um, all these is definitely uh picked up in popularity with the community. Um, I have definitely seen that lot a lot fuller uh than I have in previous times since I've lived here. Uh, we also do have another project where the P three Uno uh is currently, which will change the use of that facility. Um, so it's another thing we're gonna have to think about. There are gonna be a uh spots to get removed because the P three Uno is going potentially going away. Um, so it's a couple of moving, to my mind, a couple of moving pieces here. While, yes, it is a very large lot, um, you know, eventually.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, yeah, yeah, no, Mr. Chairman, I agree, and I, by what I think was interesting is exactly what you said about um the wave of the future. Things have changed and shopping has changed even in in areas like this, and it's interesting if you look at adjacent to not only this location, what we're talking about, um, what's there, Michael's and uh Staples. There's that lot that sits in the corner, which is almost always empty beside the few employees that realize, hey, that's a better stop for them. But I think the wave of the future is exactly that. People don't wanna be there. They wanna get in and get out as quick as possible. And that's what's unique about uh this. We've got so much overflow even in that area, which is part of the spots that we're talking about. Actually, it's ours is even more remote than that, but um I think that's, you know, even plays into the whole discussion.
Yeah, because I think what happens is is everybody ends up parking like right here, because that's kind of like where the hub of the hub of the faci- of the shopping center is. So, yeah, there's all these spots over here, but um no one ever uses them. I don't think even half the people realize that they're there, so I just I just get concerned. Um, all these has a good system with the with the quarters. I always forget to bring one myself, but we, I I every time I go there, I I haven't seen a lot. Um, um, a cart in the lot. I know that's a little something a little bit different for your project where there will be no car corrals. Um, while I have all the faith in the world that that will be properly managed by whoever gets that job, um, I do just uh have some concerns of rogue carts ending up uh in the lot. Uh, and then so I think it's something uh the board should just talk about, um, maybe a potential condition that if the building inspector finds this to be a problem, uh that some sort of action would have to be taken, uh, you know, down the road. If, you know, we're finding rogue carts, or when it snows, all of a sudden you find a shopping cart in a fifty-foot pile of snow in the corner somewhere.
So, Chris? If if I'm if I might on two points, one is with respect to your last point. As we did with Aldi's and with a a lot of other special permit um applications that um, there's a little bit of uncertainty as to how things are going to play out, because it's a little bit different for some of the assumptions made, including these carts. Uh, there will be, um, unless the board tells me not to include it, your typical um provision that says that it has to be reviewed by the building inspector if there's any complaints or anything arising, and that would include these carts. Um, then they would have their special permit wouldn't be automatically renewed, and they would have to come back to the planning board for you to address that situation to try to come to a a resolution. The other thing um with respect to people coming in parking um and staying in their cars and getting food delivered to them. I I really think that that's no different than somebody running in um parking and running in and getting the stuff, or having somebody stay in the car, and one of the passengers runs out and gets it. However, um, to the extent that it would change a traffic engineer's assumptions and calculations as to um how many people would be coming to this type of store, if that increases as a result of this type of use, then I think that's something for the um traffic engineer to consider to um if necessary, redo their calculations of how many cars should be anticipated to come to this type of facility if it has this other specialized use attached to it.
Some good, some good points there, too. And then I think we asked, and I can't remember, um, deliveries out of the site? You're going, is it going to be a store-based? Like, are they gonna have their own delivery fleet, or are we, is it like, we're talking like Instacart, Brubhub, stuff like that?
They're they're looking, well, we're still trying to work through a lot of those technical pieces, but we do have locations in the back for deliveries, and ideally, it's going to be the store owner that's or the store manager that's providing that.
Okay, so we would have potentially delivery vans or something stored overnight as well?
Uh, I guess you would.
No, I'm not gonna hold you to it tonight.
Yeah, I guess you would. I'd have to, yeah, we, so that's that's really the part of it. We're working with a a supermarket consultant, and even, you know, some of the other conditions such as, you know, items on uh that off the top of my head, what's happening inside the building, and when it comes to, you know, water usage, things like that, a lot of the design elements of that is being determined on whether or not they can come in and do this. So we're sort of like trying to work both paths concurrently, but not get too far ahead in case it doesn't happen. So uh that's part of where we're at. But that being said, yes, we're trying to work through, okay, how does it, you know, it's a specialty store, something different from Aldi's, which is a national chain that says, okay, this is what we do. This is, you know, everything is laid out. This is a specialty market, so it doesn't have that, hey, this is this is when they come, this is what what happens. Um, so it's a little bit more fluid from that standpoint.
Yeah, because it would just, it would, if you're gonna be doing deliveries out of the store, and then I know you can't account for third-party vendors, and nobody can hold you to that, but if you are running your own, that does ca- uh play into trip uh generation. You know, because you could have a delivery delivery van running all day, right? If you have, you know, three or four running in and out of the, running in and out of the place all day long. Um, so it's just something I think we should keep in the back of our heads and think about as we go down the road. Say it, Sandy, Tom, Ivan, Rich. Anything for Natalie, the applicant? I mean, we still gotta get through John, we still gotta talk to Jonathan Rich, but with Natalie's comments or concerns or. No?
No, when you went over with the the um parking was the only thing that I knew.
Um, yeah, and yeah, and then.
Is the applicant gonna have the dedicated parking for the for the other pickup? Have they mentioned that?
They'll probably, you'll probably stripe a couple of spots out, right? Like everybody else does, but aside.
So just similar to like you have fifteen-minute parking, you'd have, you know, stripe a few for that. Not for the delivery, so that's still at the back.
Yeah, okay.
You want me? If I can answer, please. Yeah, if I can answer with regards to that question, there's there's not gonna be any pickup like that. There's not, i- it's designed to be delivered. There's gonna be deliveries directly from the store, run by the store. But as far as people coming and picking up at the door, no, there won't be any of that. It'll be like a regular supermarket where people come in and shop, and they take their clo- their things with them, or they will request at the checkout that they wanted to have it delivered.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that's something, I guess, Rich will have to talk about as far as trip calculations and traffic flow and that then, too, because um, again, I know in the back of the building, there were definitely some concerns with the, from the ESOs, once those loading docks get added, that this space back in here um gets really tight. Um, I know it's wide down here, wide down here, but it gets very narrow as you go around the back of the building. Um, all right, so, but nobody else has any concerns for Natalie's comments?
Yes, I did find in the Aldi's resolution, uh, truck deliveries were required to be scheduled such that only one truck delivery was made at any time, as there was only one truck delivery dock available, and then there shall be no stacking of delivery trucks waiting for access to the dock. So just so you know that that was part of that approval. In this case, I think there's up to six or seven loading docks. Um, so I'm not sure that the first part is applicable, but um you know, perhaps the stacking of delivery trucks, and then also the timing and the amount you can consider as conditions for your action. Just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, and um Mel, why here? Are there plans to keep the trailers overnight in the loading docks like some of the other supermarkets do? And um, Mel, why here? Are there plans to keep the trailers overnight in the loading docks like some of the other supermarkets do?
There are no plans at this time to keep the trailers overnight. I mean, obviously something could happen where a particular driver comes in late and they. Takes quite a bit of time to unload it or something, but that would be more of an unusual event rather than a usual event.
What, what are the store hours going to be?
Well, that hasn't been defined at this time uh, right now. Um, we're, we're willing to see and work with the, you know, the. With the village of Woodbury or the town of Woodbury, I should say, with regard to working hours, but we'll probably operate, I would say somewhere from. Seven in the morning till probably uh nine o'clock at night. Um, if we could get longer hours or if there's a need for longer hours, then we'll probably have to go into that. We haven't really defined that, that portion of it yet.
How about it'll be days a week, correct, sir?
It'll be six days a week at this time, yes.
Six days, okay, so.
Oh, it could be seven actually because uh, it definitely could be seven.
Well, there, just as a general point, um, the, the planning board. Doesn't directly determine what's acceptable for your operational hours. Um, that's not part of the, the planning board's role or responsibilities, except to the extent that. By certain hours, they have to consider other factors, traffic and, and other things. That they might have to consider if you were working open rather, uh, far fewer hours. So they address the impacts of whether or not you will be um, opened. But not whether or not it's acceptable to be open, but in order for them to review the impacts. At some point in time, you're going to have to indicate when you are going to be open so they can assess it. And if you think that it's going to, you want to be conservative and say, you know, uh, whatever, nine to midnight. Um, seven days a week, knowing that you wouldn't exceed that, but you may go under it. At least the planning board can consider that, that impact from those extended hours.
I appreciate that. I understand. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to just point out one thing is that the plans have been revised to include hours of operation. Understanding that that's maybe subject to change at this time. And kind of like Rick was indicating, uh, there are certain conditions that the planning board has implemented in the past as far as like lighting. And uh, security lighting after a certain hour after the store closes. Um, and then dimming uh, to a certain extent. So uh, those are all things that should be consistent carried through this approval with prior, I think.
Yeah, and I think as we go down the road, uh, definitely before the public hearing, uh, those are the kind of details we're gonna need to have. Uh, pretty much nailed down, um, because those will all be um, things that people could potentially ask. Uh, so we're gonna have to have firm answers on those. So we're not gonna hold you, you know, hold you to it tonight, but. Um, as we go forward, just as you think, start thinking about these things, cause we are gonna need firm answers on them.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just mention, you, you mentioned something about it being tight behind uh, the building with the addition. It actually is the same distance off the curb as what's behind Kohl's now. Just to get it, you know, it, it looks a little bit different just because of the way the uh, the curb is there and the addition, but. Uh, they actually have, I believe it's a generator out there, they're building and it's actually the same distance. We tried to line that up so we're no closer to that curb than they were.
Yeah, it's probably the perspective, cause it kind of like, um.
Yeah, it comes in there, it looks a little bit.
Is that impacted at all by the striping, Jason? Or are you saying even the striping has that similar distance?
We adjusted the striping to account for that. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. That was why we removed those two spots. Was to get that to work there, you know, as it comes around to make that uh, twenty-six or twenty-nine feet, I believe it was.
Just before I forget, Natalie, can you um, refer over to the ESOs? The current plans and the turning radius and stuff, so we can get their official comments. I know I, I had a, you know, a private conversation with the chief, but let's officially send it over to him.
I just have a question, um, Mr. Anderson, um, when you calculated the parking. And handicap parking and everything like that, did, does that account for the, the use inside, you know, office space use versus. Retail sales floor and those kind of things? Does, does that reflect or change the deficit, the parking deficit?
So let Dennis answer that perhaps, but we did not adjust any of the parking at all, other than removal of those two. So we're accounting for it as identical to what's there uh, is remaining.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry, um, so I know the calculations that were used, I think were from, again, an earlier approval. I forget what the date of that approval was, um, as part of the Aldi's approval, which was more recent. They did a comprehensive study of all of the existing uses and the parking spaces that should be accounted for for each one. Um, if the planning board agrees, we can send you that information so that you have it and then you would have to obviously modify it or update it as needed. Um, just wanted to bring that up if it's appropriate. Um, you know, again, it's to the planning board's discretion or, you know, they could have you. Redo the analysis if necessary.
Is that similar to what you mentioned before? There was another, something that happened with Aldi that the planning board. Let us see that application, would you get that information?
Right, yes, it's exactly that, yep.
So you want us to say it's okay to release the Aldi's traffic study or parking study to them?
Or even um, the parking demand calculations. I think it was part of their site plan. Um. Or the applicant could foil it also.
Well, I don't think it's a reason.
I don't think there's a need to foil it. Uh, but, but in that context though, they, they're, all of those are clearly public records, so they can be released at any time. And somebody else's traffic report can be relied upon by um, a newer applicant. And in fact, that's. Sort of encouraged so that everybody doesn't have to redo uh, the wheel each time.
Is the board okay uh, with releasing the prior parking and traffic analysis? Okay, so I'm sure Natalie can get that over to you.
Will do.
Uh, I, one more question for you on B, on uh, the signage. Are we looking, I'm just trying to, um, I was a little confused when I read your memo. Are we looking for the building inspector to opine? On this or?
That it would be up to the planning board. Um, it could go one of two ways, I think. Uh, you know, I have solicited an interpretation from Inspector Hand at the time. Um. He agreed with the calculations that I presented as far as the wall area and where the sign could be placed and. I think the requirement is that it's ten percent of that wall area. The applicant has provided information demonstrating the wall area as if it was the whole storefront that is. Um, forever twenty-one and Lennox included. Versus just the wall area that's above the storefront where the entrance is. Um, so yes, it can be an interpretation from, from Mike or it could be similar to your condition for Aldi's, which deferred. Uh, consideration of the signage and, you know, put that on, on the building inspector to review.
But that, the, what you were putting on the building inspector at Aldi's. Is not how the sign looked, but simply as to the calculation of the size of the sign relative to the code requirements.
Right, right. So if in general you agree with how the sign looks, um, and it, it hasn't changed much, just the size and, and overall dimensions. Um, then it could be something that the building department looks in at in more detail for area, uh, the mounting, you know, face of the wall.
In, in the memorandum that I, that I submitted, I had discussed this point. And I had noted that, that the last time around we discussed this. Mr. Hand had determined that this ten percent rule would apply, which meant that their wall signs should be sixty-five square feet. They've provided calculations that their proposed wall sign is a hundred fifty-one. So. Uh, I would definitely ask whoever the building inspectors uh, at the time. Whether this hundred fifty-one square feet i- is meeting the code or not, and if it doesn't. Uh, how much of a variance would they be required to ask for from the ZBA? And, and that way, you'll, we'll, we'll get an answer.
So it sounds like I go to the building inspector for an opinion. You agree, Rick?
Yeah, well, that I think would probably be the most efficient way to do it rather than. Deferring the calculations to afterwards, and then if he determines they needed a variance for what they wanted, then, then have to start over with the ZBA.
Yeah, I think, I, I agree. I think instead of, um, now, I don't want to worry about what the sign looks like right now until we know. Square footage, like what can be, what square footage is gonna be allowed, cause I think that will dictate what the sign ends up looking like. Um, everybody else, what do we, what do we feel that everybody, see some head nodded?
Sounds like the way to go. Find out how big it's gonna be, if it's gonna be acceptable.
Okay, alright, so can we, Natalie, can we send that over to Mike for interpretation, please?
Yes, will do.
Thank you very much. Okay. Alright, you wanna, shall we move on to Jonathan and his memorandum then?
I just have a, a quick question. This is uh, Dennis Lynch from um, MJ Engineering. Um, as far as the uh, ESO that regarding access, who is setting up, are we setting up a meeting or this is just getting submitted to them? It's going through the, through the town or how are we moving forward with that?
Uh, typically, we can do it one of two ways. Typically, um, we can set up a meeting where we would meet with the ESOs. Or, um, we could send it over to them first, let them comment on it. Uh, see what they, which is usually what we do because it, we like to see what kind of comments they come back with. Sometimes I'll look at your. Plan and they'll be like, they have no issues with it. Or they'll just be like, can we just move the standpipe three feet to the left or a striping six feet to the right? Or, or they may say, well, we have some serious concerns. We'll need to sit together and, and talk and hash them out. So typically, I, what we normally do is like I said, Natalie will send it over, the chief will get back to us in a week, in a couple of days, the police department EMS. And then we'll go from there. We need a follow-up meeting, we can, we can schedule that.
Okay, is there, you need any additional copies or anything or submission?
No, we send it over, we send it over digitally today, okay. Alright, thank you. Sorry, Natalie, I stole your thought there.
No, it's good.
Alright, Mr. Lockman.
Uh, you have my report from October twenty-sixth. And uh, back in the previous time I reviewed this in July. I had given them a laundry list of, of when they submitted specific plans, uh. What information we wanted on there. They were extremely responsive. Uh, our comments. Uh, one through nine and eleven and twelve were all resolved. They've submitted information on all those items. Uh, the only one that I questioned was the signs where uh, previously Mr. Hand had come up. With that they had an allocation of sixty-five square feet that they could use for their wall sign. And they're proposing a hundred fifty-one. We just talked about how to move forward on that issue. And in my comment, uh, thirteen, I recommended that. Um, other than the size of the signage, I didn't see that there were any issues of the, for. Uh, the architectural review board review, uh, in that it seems to. Uh, the, the, the changes to the look in the rear uh, are minimal and the changes in the front really are just the signage.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Jonathan on the board? Certainly, I, did I step on somebody?
No, I just said no.
Oh, okay. Uh, alright, Rich, go ahead.
So I think, uh, you know, Natalie actually touched on several of the comments that we had. Uh, specific to the truck turning maneuvers and the shopping carts and things like that. Um, I'm just gonna point out the other, some of the other things that we had talked about, so. Um, one of the things we were looking for was a trip generation comparison of. What the former uses would generate compared to the proposed supermarket use. Um, you know, i- it, it sounds like, you know, this use may be a, a little bit different with the vans, but. Generally, I think, you know, a, a trip generation comparison based on uh, IT data would be sufficient for this. Um, depending on, you know, kind of what that comparison shows, um, we kind of, we were requesting a, an analysis of. Uh, Center Drive at the Dunkin' Donuts Ring Road intersection, that first internal intersection there. Um, just kind of get an idea of how that actually is operating with the, especially with the additional traffic this is probably gonna generate. Um, and then potentially also at seven, uh, the, the um, thirty-two intersection. Um, considering the recent, uh, the recently approved shops at Woodbury Development also. Um, so tho- those are the two things for, from a traffic analysis standpoint, um. Uh, the, the only other thing that I think maybe needs to be looked at by the applicant a little bit is, um. Pedestrian travel pass, uh, th- there may be some, based on where the door access is gonna be, m- maybe we need to look at. Uh, potentially another crosswalk or maybe some kind of just a signage or something for pedestrian travel paths towards that entryway. Um, uh, other than that, I think everything else was kind of touched on already. I think you're gonna have, yes, so has reviewed the, the truck. Traffic and, or the truck turning maneuvers and things like that, so I think we're kind of covered there.
Any questions for Rich?
Um, Chris, I just have a question about, I thought when, the last time. When the applicant appeared and had, um, Woodbury Shops, I thought that. Were we gonna do some kind of like coordinated review as far as the, the traffic for? In consideration of both? Because of, I mean, I'm just going off of my memory, wasn't, weren't there going to be like fourteen? Individual little shops in that one space?
Yeah, there are, and. Um, I think actually what the applicant will need to do, and I thought I touched on this with Phil. Uh, maybe he didn't make it over, is because of the quick service restaurant that is being, um. Proposed for there and the other, uh, other applicants of the project. Um, yeah, um, they're gonna just, they're gonna have to look at the total trips to and from, uh, based on those uses in that. I'm not making any sense, I'm sorry. Hold on, it's getting late. Um. Um, pause. Maybe we didn't. I thought we did. I'm looking at my notes, I don't see anything.
I, I thought we had. Maybe, I, I thought, I thought that because of the amount of stores that, that was a question. As far as traffic goes, that it would have to be looked at.
Well, isn't that, Rich, isn't that why we're asking that we look at Center Drive and Ring Road, um, the, the amount of traffic that's gonna be going through that intersection? Cause that is the main.
Certainly, you know, we're, we're asking for that and, and being that is, that's kind of like the main internal intersection there in, in. Anything that we do traffic wise should, should take into account whatever else is proposed within the entire shopping center. So if there are other things moving forward there, they, they should be taking into account those items and the traffic that would be associated with it.
And it, it would be prudent, Rick, right, that we do be, we do have a quick service, um, application in front of us now for the same. Uh, center that they, they take that into account in their analysis, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so Jason, you'll just have to, whatever traffic analysis accounts you do, you'll have to. Uh, make, take into account that the, the owner, the P three Uno was out. And that is becoming a, a, a quick service, fast food restaurant.
Okay.
That application came in your, after your guys' application.
Okay, okay.
So, um. I think that should address the concerns, cause I think that's gonna be the bigger traffic generator in that.
Yeah, the, the Woodbury Shops is really like and kind for retail, but something like that is, is much more of a trip generator.
Yeah, and you're all gonna, you're gonna, that, you only have that really, that one intersection when you come in that handles. All the traffic and, you know, people can attest to in the morning when everybody pulls off the thruway to get their coffee. Uh, there actually have been times that the, the, uh, what do you call it, the. The takeout, the drive-through of Dunkin' Donuts has actually backed up onto Center Drive in the morning.
Yep. Have they submitted? I, I have not been following along with that. Are they, they came after us, but have they submitted a full package or they?
They submitted a, they submitted a full package.
They haven't been. Did they start a traffic study then too or yet or?
There was a traffic report with, um, they, uh, they did put trip generations in their. Um, report that they gave to us. We haven't reviewed it yet, cause they haven't officially been in front of us, but. That application has been submitted. It is, it is there. Um, I did speak, I did, but with that, I did speak to our traffic consultants because, um, I feel their generation. Of fast food restaurant is very light. Uh, how many extra trips it's gonna add to it, but just, so yeah, you can get that if you want to see it at the.
Yeah, okay, so we'll figure that out and, uh.
Alright, well, yeah, okay, so we'll figure that out and uh, we'll talk to Richard, Phil.
Yeah, sorry about that, but we've got to, we've got to look at the site as a, as a whole. We can't just look at as a, your project only, because it will, everything affects or else. Alright, anybody else from the board? Questions, comments, concerns, things we're looking for? Um, I will say, I don't think we're at the stage to schedule your public hearing yet. I think you, you got at least one more submission. Uh, before we get there, we've got to look at the opinions from the building department and get some e- feedback from the ESOs.
And we don't, we really don't see much in the letters that uh, shocks us or scares us. So uh, we think we're in good shape. I mean, I think the biggest thing is going to be how much we know and can actually provide, even when it comes to rooftop equipment, things like that, it's. You know, it's limited until we, we know that, uh, but we will provide whatever we can on that uh, piece and um. Yeah, other than that, we'll follow through on the other items. Um, and if we can get that information from Aldi's, that would be, be helpful as we try to prepare this package moving forward.
Alright, I think I hear everything, Rick, on this, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Alright, uh, nobody else from the board has any other concerns for this applicant? We'll let them go and for the evening. Alright, thank you everybody for your time tonight.
Alright, thank you very much.
Okay, planning board, you can't run away yet. We do have one additional item that uh, Engineer Barber has added to us for this evening. Uh, it was emailed out late this afternoon. Uh, I will, oh, you know what, actually, as you pull your file, Natalie, I have pictures from. Uh, Mike that he wanted me to share about the ponding that takes. Uh, place there, so hold on. Let me find them.
While you're looking, Chris, I can kind of just go over it with the board. Um. This is going to, this is a proposed field change uh, by Woodbury, Woodbury Villas to install two catch basins. Um, and the associated piping that goes with, along with them to address a ponding issue that was identified in a um. Inspection that was conducted in July. Um, so the catch basins will be installed, it'll address the ponding that's here. Uh, we'd like to have and see this done before the winter so that there's not an icing condition uh, that could develop any safety issues. Uh, we've reviewed the plan uh, that was circulated to the planning board. And I've also uh, provided the applicant's engineers' comments, um, or I should say the developers' engineers' comments to you for your, uh, your consideration. So as long as the board doesn't have any questions, uh, we will go ahead and let the uh, developer know that they should proceed with this installation.
And this, uh, if you can see my screen, this is uh, what Mike Penella, the building inspector, sent over to me. So this was after some recent rain. Obviously, this one and then he sent. So obviously it is. A fairly large issue.
Yes.
How far, so that's off of Nidinger and how far in?
This is Road D, um, so it's actually the center road of Phase One. Uh, if you're like visualizing the plan on the side of it in your head, um. And it's also at Station, so if you have the plan in front of you, I'm not sure, um. I think it was Station nine fifty, but it's uh, just off the cul-de-sac. To the west. Does that help?
Honestly, no. I don't, I don't have it in front of me, so.
Chris, if you could pull up Google Earth or perhaps maybe I could just point to the approximate area. I'm not sure if that's helpful.
Yeah, hold on. Because if I ever got lost with you in the woods and you just gave me those directions, no one would ever find us.
I'm terrible with geography.
I'd be like that guy that, um, did anybody hear about that guy that, um, he got lost in the woods, they were calling his cell phone to find him.
He didn't know, he didn't know who was calling?
He wouldn't, he wouldn't answer it because it was an unknown phone number, so he spent an extra night in the woods.
Some people shouldn't leave their house.
There's somebody you want to hire.
Alright, hold on, let me. Down here, right, Natalie?
Actually, it's the road above, so the uh, the central road, right, and then just to the right of that cul-de-sac.
So in, in here?
Uh, it's just a little bit to the right, almost where that driveway, you could see it started to get cut in right around there approximately.
Alright, so this is a new area where they're, they've started to do work.
This is an older, um, visual of the area. These roads have substantially been constructed.
Yeah, and this has all been cleared out too. This is all.
Exactly.
Stuff now. Um, I did speak to Building Inspector Penella, um, he is in agreement with allowing them to put the, the drainage dishes in. Uh, sorry, the catch basin, so let's use our proper engineering terms. Uh, he said it is a, a ponding and he does want to actually get it um, taken care of before the winter because he feels it will be. A safety concern for the residents of the community there. So, um, with that said, I think we should allow them to do it and we've got both Mike and Natalie saying it's needed. Uh, we do know there are definitely runoff issues and water collection issues there, anything we can do to. Take care of that, I think, uh, is a good thing. Do we need an official vote, Rick?
Uh, you should for the record, yes.
Okay, so I'll offer a motion to allow the installation of the catch basins per uh, Engineer Barber's uh, submission from today.
Second.
Second by Evan. Any questions? Ball in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Okay. And then another thing, no, just kidding, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. I'm sorry to take up more of your time tonight.
Well, it's, it's okay. I'd rather get it done and, you know, done the right way than what's been going on, so this is good. Alright, anybody got anything else for today? Alright.
Motion. I don't, I don't think we accepted the previous minutes.
I don't think we had them, did we?
I didn't get a copy.
No, there was a delay today. I'm sorry, guys, with the. I had to um. Make some changes on them because there was some errors.
And pesky taxes, how to get done.
And the taxes. They're finally done, so I'll be able to concentrate more on the planning board.
Alright, no, no worries. Uh, anybody want to stay and just hang out for a while? No? Okay, motion, motion to close? Pick two. Alright, everybody have a, have a good evening. I'll see you all.
Good night.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.